Any everyone? Good morning, welcome to the Russell County Board of Supervisors, August the 3rd, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. I'd like to first start off with roll call and uh in order. First, Andrew Hensley.
Here.
Luann Wallace.
Here.
Tara Dye.
Here.
David Eaton.
Here.
Rebecca Dye.
Here.
Nate Kaiser.
Present.
And Steve Brady.
Here.
Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. Okay, first, we're going to have the invocation, and if you stand for the invocation, and then remain standing for the pledge, please. Go ahead, Jake.
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day, God, we thank you for your mercy and your grace. Lord, we ask that you please forgive us where we fail you, Lord, for our sins and shortcomings. Lord, we thank you for this country that you blessed us with, Lord, for this freedom. Lord, we thank you for this county that you've given us, Lord, its beauty. And, Lord, we thank you for your son, Jesus, that died for each and every one of us. And, Lord, as we come together today, Lord, to conduct your business, Lord, we ask that you, your will be done. And, Lord, that our attitudes and, Lord, that our conduct be pleasing in your sight. And, Lord, we pray you and thank you in Jesus' holy name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval of the agenda. Everybody has an opportunity to look at it, if you have any amendments, we need to hear them now. If there are no amendments, I'll just entertain a motion to approve the agenda that's presented.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. There are none.
No, I'm going to abstain, I don't have number 12, I don't have that in my packet, that letter of support. But, ma'am, the agenda looks good to me.
I don't think you have it in there.
We don't, we don't.
We're going to discuss it. We're going to discuss it.
Okay, then I will rescind that.
Okay.
Mine's an aye.
So, it was unanimous then?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, first of all, we have some presentations from the American Red Cross. Lonzo, you want to go ahead and take charge of that?
Yes.
Get you first up here.
Hello, my name is Sharon Dixon, I'm the Disaster Program Manager for the American Red Cross. So, since we've been here, yes, some of you've been here thirty minutes or more, there's been at least three house fires or disasters within the United States. Right now, we've got people that's on their way to Florida to help with whatever that storm is coming in. We have been so busy this year, and those of you that have heard about the Maui wildfires, we had over eight thousand people in shelters during that time. So, you can imagine how much is your population of the town of Lebanon. So, just imagine if something was to take out your town. Who would be your people there helping? Of course, your community, your leaders, your members of your organizations. And that's one thing the Red Cross comes in. So, we might not get asked for, for the hurricane is starting, but we're already on our way to be able to help the communities. So, right now, we have vehicles that's on their way that can start feeding as soon as the storm passes. We have people in hotels right now, so that they'll be able to open up a shelter, because they don't know right now before that storm's coming in. So, that's just two of the things that the Red Cross does. The other thing, day before yesterday, y'all had a house fire. I don't know how many of y'all realize that there was a house fire in Castlewood. It affected a lady and her son. The Red Cross was there to meet those people and help with their needs. One of the needs we help with is health services. So, several of you got glasses on, I have my glasses on today. We're able to replace their glasses if they lose their glasses. We're able to help with interest, any type of medical needs that we are able to, if they cannot pay for medical needs or they don't have insurance, the Red Cross is there to help them. We have had an instance where we paid over four hundred dollars for someone's insulin, because they did not have the means to pay for it. Yesterday evening, we had a church family in, before I go to church at, that lost everything due to a house fire. So, if you can imagine, what would you do? Where would you start at in your recovery process? That's just a little bit of what the Red Cross does. So, we're there to help them out in their time of need. Back in 2023, and I want to read this, because I want to make sure I have it all correct, on March 18th, 2023, the Lebanon Fire Department was alerted to an apartment fire with victims trapped on the second story. Possibly two other victims had already jumped from the second story of the house. Upon arrival, the Lebanon Fire Department placed a ladder at the second story, which is Charlie's side, which I don't know what side that is, but I'm guessing that might be the backside, I'm just guessing. And that firefighter, Dan Bush, then climbed the ladder to reach the victim, and removed her safely down and out of the house. Medical attention was then provided to the victim, and she has recovered, and it's a hundred percent healthy today. So, that just represents what your fire department does here in your community. There's a lot of other things your fire department does. They work with us to install smoke alarms, and we do it for free. I have left a flyer there on your table that anyone can sign up for smoke alarms. We do this for, be able to save a life. Because if it's in the middle of the night, if you're sleeping, how do you know if you've got something going on in your home as far as the fire or there's smoke? So, those smoke alarms really are very important. We went out day before yesterday and installed smoke alarms, and none of the houses we went to had smoke alarms in them. So, it's important to have them. We, last year alone, did over eleven hundred smoke alarm installs. And is working with our partners, community members, to help us do that, we can't do it alone. So, this is another thing that the Red Cross does out in your community that you might not hear about. So, what I would like to do is recognize Dan Bush today for his service in him saving a person's life in y'all's community. So, would Dan and Jess come up here? So, because some of you know that Jess Powers, your emergency coordinator, is also a Red Cross volunteer. So, Dan, I'd like to present you.
Jack, Jacob.
This is called the Celebration of Heroes. It's something that the Red Cross does every year, is to recognize in local community people with what they do. And so, we had three of them in our region that got an award from our Southwest Virginia Chapter of the Red Cross, which we cover twenty-two counties. So, it's a lot of mileage that we're moving in between. So, we would like to recognize Dan for what he did the night of March 18th in 2023. The next thing I'd like to do is recognize someone that doesn't like a lot of recognition, and this is going to be for Jess Powers, your emergency coordinator. Jess has been with the Red Cross now for twenty years, helping your community out. So, he goes out all the different times of the night to be able to help someone that's in need, whether it be a house fire, a tree that's fallen in on a home, flooding, or whatever it might be. And this for y'all might not know, if a car is to run into someone's home, that's something we can help with, because they might not be able to stay in that home. So, just thinking outside the box, that's something the Red Cross can do. The other thing I'd like to make mention is that y'all have had several occasions over here that we've come to canteen for your fire departments and your first responders. First one that I happened to be able to help with was the cave rescue that happened about four years ago. We was able to help over sixty first responders that day with breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and was able to have planned to go through the night to help out. We helped with flooding, not flooding, but drownings, that we're able to provide snacks, water, and food for your first responders. And it all comes from Jess working with us, notify us about it, because we don't self-deploy. The last one was when someone burned about four or five different structures or cars, and we was able to provide pizza and snacks and water that night. But for Jess, we like to recognize him, because he's been over five hundred and eighty-two house fires and different disasters in your community. So, we would like to recognize him with the Patty Towser Service Award for his commitment to your community and the commitment to the Red Cross.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much, we certainly understand how valuable the Red Cross is. Ms. Nunley, Isaiah House, you're up next.
Good morning, thank you all so much for having us here this morning, I'm Acacia Nunley. We've met before, but I'm with Isaiah 117 House, and our goal is to change the way that foster care begins here in Russell County. So, I'll start with our current statistics, there are currently eighty-one children in the foster care system here in Russell County. When we spoke in April or May, it was seventy-six. So, clearly, that number's going up, not down. When a child is removed from their home, they're taken to the Department of Social Services to wait for their placement. Children often spend a few days there at the department, sometimes a few hours, sometimes a few days, as they wait for their placement with no place really to sleep or bathe. They are provided air mattresses and things like that, but no home environment to be in. They're often hungry, dirty, exhausted, and have little to no possessions to themselves. So, an aspect of this that we often overlook is the impact of addiction on the foster care system, but it cannot be overstated. So, the next slide will tell you that the addiction crisis, combined with the percentage of individuals living below the federal poverty line here in Russell County, is a major contributing factor to our children that are entering the foster care system. Russell County's NAS birth rate, or the Neonatal Abstinence Syndrome birth rate, is eleven point six per thousand live births. The Virginia Department of Health released that. But, this is nearly three times the overall state rate of four point eight. So, very much a crisis here in our area. It has been found that children of addicts, people that are addicted to drugs and alcohol, are forty-five percent to seventy-nine percent more likely to also abuse drugs and alcohol compared to the general population. The correlation between the addiction crisis in Russell County and the growing number of children in the foster care system, as I said, cannot be overstated. So, we asked the question at Isaiah 117 House, what if there was a home, a place for children to come as they await their foster care placement, so they don't have to wait at the conference center, at the government center here, at the Department of Children's Services? So, our mission is to bring that home to Russell County, so that we can help reduce their trauma, lighten the load for our DSS workers, and ease their transition into foster care. To reduce trauma, we want to create a safe, loving environment with certified volunteers to provide for meals and baths, clothing, a safe home for children awaiting their foster care placement, a chance to wrap around the members of our community who are suffering and vulnerable on that very hardest day. To lighten the load for our DSS caseworkers, we want to create a fully equipped working environment for DSS inside of the home. They'll have a great office space where it's all glass, they can see the children that are in their care, and they can tend to their sensitive phone calls and do the work that they need to do. We also want to provide loving emotional support for our DSS caseworkers, meals and snacks, things like that, anything to make their job easier as they are facing some of the hardest situations out there with these different situations, especially those arising from cases with addiction. And then, finally, we want to ease the transition into foster care. Supporting our foster families and also our kinship care families is vital to our ministry and what we want to do in our town. We want to supply children with five to seven new outfits as they leave us, as well as school supplies, toiletries, anything that they need to carry into their foster families, as well as offer our foster families and kinship care families twin beds, car seats, formula, diapers, meals, anything to help them say yes to that placement, because the quicker that children can be placed in secure, loving homes, we feel the better. So, it makes it easier for our foster families and kinship families to be able to say yes to receiving that placement and get children into homes quicker, easier, with the resources that they need. So, in all, we want our community to join together and say, not our kids, not our community, we believe that we can offer them a space and help and be there for them in this time of need. So, here's some fast facts about our organization. We have fifty-seven locations and now twenty-six open homes. I believe our last reported number when we were here last time was twenty-four. So, it's growing, the homes are working, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, which is just amazing and wonderful. So, as you know, we have a land donation, we're looking toward groundbreaking on that, hopefully, this fall. The new build will be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the rough estimate of how much it costs to build the home with all of the different specific needs that the home has for the different areas that we're ministering to children. And then, the yearly operational budget is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And then, we will have one full-time position within the home and two part-time positions, but as of right now, those positions are not filled, and they won't be until the fall. So, here is a story from our open, one of our open homes that illustrates how the house functions, how it ministers to children and meets their needs. So, it says, "Our teenage male guest entered our home and went straight to the couch, barely saying a word to anyone. Our worker started talking to him, asking if he would like a snack or if there was anything he needed. He simply kept saying, 'No, I'm good.' However, our worker noticed his shoes were falling apart, held together with duct tape and full of holes. She asked him, 'What about new shoes?' 'You could pick some out online, and I can go pick them up. I can even send our other worker pictures for you to choose from.' He didn't know his shoe size, because it had been so long since he had gotten new clothes, but he did express that he really liked a black pair of shoes. So, the worker traced his shoe on a piece of paper to estimate his size. After looking through some pictures, he found a pair he liked. When the worker brought them back and handed them to him, he started to cry. He said he didn't deserve anything this nice, but if only this sweet boy knew, he truly deserved this and so much more. He wanted to call his grandmother and show her his new shoes, feeling so proud of them. For some, it's just a pair of shoes, but for him, it represented being seen and the gift of kindness that made him feel valued. It was him seeing through his own eyes that he was seen and noticed, and we are so blessed to be able to perform acts of kindness like this for so many children who truly deserve it, and help them see they do truly deserve it and so much more." So, at Isaiah 117 House, our dream and our goal and what we strive to do is have lasting impact, not only on the child on that specific day, but on the community as a whole and on gathering us all together to wrap around the most vulnerable among us and really be a community that stands by its own. So, at Isaiah 117 House, we seek to change the way foster care begins for all children in Russell County and to provide resources for vulnerable children in our community. Our desire is to be the beginning link in a chain that will help break the cycles of family trauma and addiction by providing children with care and support on their hardest day. We believe the impact of showing children love, you're not alone, can reach beyond those first few days in foster care by creating a supportive community that wraps around those of us who are in difficult situations. Thank you so much for your time, we appreciate you.
Thank you. If you don't mind, stand right there just a second, okay? I asked the county administrator when I first came in, so we don't have to keep you all here all day, as far as line nine. The budget committee met yesterday, and we had a conversation with you in regards to funding resources. And I really appreciate working with you and Senator Pillion and the conversations we've had back and forth with that committee to make sure they would give us the green light, to be able to use this money to help fund your project. What I want to do is make sure that we can do it quicker, faster, and get you up to speed, not only for the budgetary side, but also for the needs of these children. It's been a very, and Woody Scott's, Pastor Woody Scott's here today, he knows it's been a passion of mine, and he is also to help kids and to get them in a home, so we don't have to send them all over the country, you know, for these needs. But I'm going to make a motion that we give a hundred thousand dollars for construction and a hundred thousand dollars for operational funding to the Isaiah 117 House to help them get in operation quicker and help the needs of our county and our children in this time of need.
So, I have a motion, so I have a motion on the floor. I think this will be a hundred thousand dollars right now to go towards construction, which should leave you about thirty thousand dollars short. Hopefully, you can pick that up and donate materials donations, so it should lock you into construction, okay?
Are you taking this out of our general fund?
No, no, this is out of opioid monies. Yeah.
We need to ask the attorney on that, because I don't think you can take.
It's been approved, Senator Pillion's approved.
But I, the state statute says you can't build a building with it. Would you double check? Because I don't want to misspeak, I don't want to deny me anything, but I don't want to do something that we get in trouble with.
My mic's not working, but I can speak up. Everybody hear me okay? I believe the statute does allow you to use the opioid funds for certain capital purposes as long as they're towards the goals that are set out in the OAA statute. And it would be up to the board's pleasure whether or not you wanted to utilize Russell County's individual county funds for this purpose or not. I believe the state has approved an application on this one, but I'll have to review. This is the first opportunity I've had to, I didn't know we were going to get money out today. So, the only thing I would tell the applicant is, the law requires us to execute a memorandum of understanding between the applicant and the county in order for the county to serve as a fiscal agent for opioid abatement funds. And so, that's what we would be working towards if the board moves forward with the motion.
And also, they have stated with a verbal agreement to have it constructed. Oh, I do know it does state this, you have to have a procurement, you can't, you have to have sealed bids. So, your house would have to go out and have a sealed bid to give everybody an opportunity to say that they will construct it. That's Virginia law, when you use that money.
Mr. Chair. I don't, I'm not going to be your parliamentarian, but you do not have a second on this for discussion.
No, we do not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, I do need a second, please. Have a second, okay, now, Ms. Dye.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go ahead. But I do want us to review so that we don't mess up and they get in trouble and then have to pay all this money back. So, I mean, I don't have any objection, but I just want it done correctly.
Perhaps, Mr. Eaton, you could amend your motion to say pending review of these issues that Ms. Dye's brought in.
Well, I've already had it certified through Senator Pillion and their board that this, and we had, you had a conference call with Senator Pillion, everything was good to go, right? I'm not going to amend anything, this is, I've done my due diligence, I've done everything I needed to do to get this money approved, so they can go ahead and start operations.
Very good. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I've got something, so it sounds like possibly that you all will have to take some extra steps to get this money, to make sure that you're staying within the restrictions. Could Mr. Wampler, could you work with them to make sure that that's happening? Or is that something that's outside of your purview?
I can work with them on the opioid abatement authority.
Make sure they have all their, make sure they have all their ducks in a row, if they need to do anything to take care of that, okay?
Something I'd like to suggest is use your money to get your house framed up and under roof. When you get to the finishing, that's when you can start bidding stuff out, could they do that? So, like electrical sheetrock, the finish on the inside of the house, could they do that?
I'll have to review the application, and then also the, we can work that out through the MOU and the budget, how costs are separated between capital and operating, and I can make that clear for the board in a application or MOU, the future meeting. On the fly, I can't produce a MOU here this afternoon, but I can work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Give me the Ms. Wallace.
Ms. Nunley, I appreciate you coming, I appreciate your passion, I appreciate the passion of this board. But historically, in some of these other meetings, we have had applications that have been not filled out properly, and we've had issues. And so, I think moving forward that this board is interested in transparency and doing the right thing. And so, the application, I think, needs to have some work on it, from what I've seen in my packet. And so, are you, is your nonprofit fully functionable now? Because the application doesn't lead me to believe that there's a real nonprofit there.
Oh, okay, yeah, we finished our application this week and submitted it, and I was told that everything looked good and was good to go. Whenever we submitted those numbers, we based it off of where we're at currently functioning, which, of course, we're in the expansion phase, working to bring the home here. And so, that's why we're here, trying to get through that first phase, so that we can start serving children and actually have the home in place. So, all of those numbers reflect where we're at this year, where we're going to be next year, and then hopefully, all the way through, I believe we filled it out through 2026, how those numbers grow and based off of our statistics from other homes and things like that. So, yes, we are a fully functioning 501(c)(3) here in Russell County. Of course, we don't have our home yet, but we do already have donations and things like that to start distributing at DSS. We're in our six months of awareness, so once that ends at our luncheon on October the 3rd, we'll move forward into our construction phase. And during that time, we can be constructing and serving at the DSS office. Of course, we're currently serving monthly doing DSS appreciation, we're working with children, we've already purchased groceries for children. And Buchanan County, we're working closely with their DSS office to see how we can start serving now. So, those numbers and projections are just based off of where we're at in our expansion phase and how things are going to go moving forward.
Yes, and I understand that, so I don't, I mean, I don't need to know this, but I have no idea where your property is.
Yes, it's on Oldson Castle Road, it's out in Lebanon here, we have about point six seven acres, and we already have grade work lined up to go as soon as we're through our luncheon. We have to get through that October the 3rd, then we can have our groundbreaking. We have a general contractor, we're working on our blueprints, and then we're going to get our permits here shortly. So, we meet with the architects in just a couple of weeks.
I see, so with that being said, with this money, since it's kind of public, nearly public, whatever you want to call it, help me out with this.
My understanding is that it's non-taxpayer money, it is a grant for opioid abatement, is that correct?
But it still has to be procured properly and done by state standards, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we just want to make sure that all of our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed.
Is there anything else that I can answer or help with that?
I think the attorney will help you with that.
Great.
But I think this board just needs to function like we've been functioning for other entities, thank you.
On your grant, ale, has your project been certified or credentialed by a state, federal government agency, or other organization, nonprofit? And it's marked no, but you are a nonprofit.
We are a nonprofit, yes.
But your grant says you're not.
I'm not sure.
Lebanon, well, ale, ale.
Okay, I can go back and work it back.
You can revise that.
Yeah, absolutely, we are a 501(c)(3). Does anybody else have a question that I can help clarify?
Any further questions from the board on this matter?
I would like to make a statement one more time, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Ms. Wallace.
I think it's a worthy cause, I really do. I just think that we just need to have a little more information and just to make sure that we are properly using these funds the way they're intended to be, and I'm not saying that you're not.
Sure, sure.
So, but what we have in front of us is not a complete application, I don't think, or whatever, for us to make a decision today. And I appreciate our attorney that's going to look at that and make sure that we're on the right track.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, sir.
If I may, and what I'll do for the board's, I guess, edification on this moving forward is we'll put together some of the guidelines for the opioid abatement authority funds and just a standard process, presuming that this won't be the first or last application that you get. And that way, you can have just a standard runway for any projects that come through this. And so, that would help the board, I'm happy to develop that between now and the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to say one thing that, you know, we've, how much money do we have now, Lonzo?
We're currently.
In our opioid funds.
Currently, right now, you've got over six hundred thousand dollars, and it's coming in.
And I think we were given, we were given this money to try to correct a problem that's caused basically by opioids. It's been in my experience in working through the recovery programs that I'd say ninety-five to ninety-nine percent of the problems of the children that I see going into foster care, they're drug-related. And I don't think you can argue that point, and I think that's why Senator Pillion is so adamant about this, trying to get this money out there, let's get it out there and use it, don't sit on it. That's what he's told us, basically, so.
Yes.
We have a motion, second on the floor.
I have another question. How many kids stayed at DSS last year?
Um, I don't have that information for us. I know that eighty-one are in the system presently.
Yeah, that fluctuates, that comes and goes. Yeah, and it'll go, it'll go up once school gets back in swing too.
We estimate to serve about a hundred children per year to a hundred and fifty. It's our estimation.
In DSS and foster care?
Uh, through our home.
Oh, you can serve that many?
We estimate yearly to serve around a hundred to a hundred and fifty children.
I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of this motion signify the same aye.
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 I'm going to say aye only on the thing that we do everything legal.
Of course.
That we follow the state statutes. You get your, uh, procurements through the state standards.
Yes, absolutely.
All in favor of this motion, everybody signify. All opposed to this motion, like sign. And there are none, so this is unanimous vote. We will make sure that, we will make sure that everything's in accordance with regulations. Okay, let's move on.
We appreciate you all's time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Diana. You're up next.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. The Electoral Board and I wanted to come before you today to address the urgent need to procure and secure an electronic poll book system for elections. In April, when we found out that we were not going to have a, an electronic poll book system that would be supported and serviced, um, we set out to do two things. Well, the first one was to get through the June primary. And we did so by using our emergency plan or our backup, which are the paper poll books. The paper poll books served very well, as well as a good spare tire works. So we knew we needed to secure a primary electronic poll book system for elections. Uh, at the same time, we knew that we needed an electronic poll book system that was highly regarded, highly regarded in the industry and also highly trusted, um, by localities around us. And we found out that seventy-five percent of the counties around us use the No Ink system. Their electronic poll book system is called PollPad. Their ballot on demand system is called PollPrint. At the same time that this was going on, the Department of Elections was aware that there was an issue with some localities not having an electronic poll books. So we were not the only ones that were in the situation. In fact, uh, the majority, over fifty percent of the localities wound up in difficult situations as a result of not having an electronic poll book system. The, uh, Department of Elections offered a grant. We immediately applied and we were told just a few days ago that we were partially awarded. We have approximately forty-eight days before early voting begins. Early voting is going to be here. It's going to be getting here very, very quickly. So that gives us a very short window to have all of this in place. And of course, the benefits of getting it in place immediately are very, very clear. It will give us a chance to avoid any hasty shipping, any hasty setup. It will allow us to train, to arrange with the election officers, to arrange with No Ink, uh, the travel and schedule for, for training. And it will also allow us the time to test and test and test as many times as we need to, to make sure that we are ready for the election. Um, No Ink is, um, on standby and they're ready to answer any questions, uh, that you might have and to begin the process of getting the electronic poll book system to us upon your approval. There's any questions, I'll make sure that we can address them with them.
Good.
So you need these, this PollPad as, as soon as possible, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yes, what, what our goal is, is to make sure that Russell County does not go through this November election on its spare tire. It is a historical election. We all know that the volume that we're expecting is very likely going to break records. It's unprecedented. So we want to make sure that we've got everything in place.
Well, I want to make a motion that we buy these for you. You've got to have them.
I'll second it.
Have a motion, second for discussion. Mr. Lester, we've looked at this and you might comment on how we think we're going to have to purchase this.
Yes. Uh, of course, I've met with the Electoral Board and, and we have done our due diligence. I'm not going to say that anymore. It's getting to the word. Goodness gracious. But anyhow, we have, and our IT department has looked at what they had proposed. They looked at multiple systems that were utilized by the state of Virginia that had the most success rate and that was approved by the Electoral Board and had also been reviewed and seen by the Attorney General's Office to make sure it meets all the security requirements and all this. So after working with them, of course, Electoral Board to also do its due diligence, I want to hammer this out from here on out. Um, they did, they looked at, uh, getting grants for this proposal and to be able to pu- purchase these for the counties to utilize in taxpayers' dollars. Well, as all the counties that went in and, and in needing these systems for this general election, especially in these rural areas, they were only able to get ten percent, approximately a ten percent grant of the total purchase. So, we, we worked through all the systems and now we're down to where we've chose the best, the Electoral Board has chose the best system based off of the Electoral Board of State of Virginia, the Attorney General's Office. And, um, this is a purchase that we're going to make. So now from the financial perspective, we're going, we have the option to move this over a three-year term. So what we're going to do is, is set up an agreement with the company that they're working with the other counties around the state of Virginia to be able to purchase this over a three-year period. So, uh, about what it comes to is about $30,000 a year. So, and it has a useful life of approximately five with a service agreement for three. So, uh, the important thing about these systems is the software and the security issues. So, um, that is the way that it has been proposed as perceived, the Electoral Board's in agreement. So that is it.
That'll be for three-year financials.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Does the board have any other questions, discussion on this matter?
Will that include, uh, uh, software updates?
Yes, ma'am.
All that you need, this should take care of. Yes. Correct. Correct.
Any further questions?
So on, once it's purchased, it's thirty a year for three years.
Yep.
Thirty, thirty-three, it's about ninety-nine thousand dollars.
It's about nine, about thirty-three thousand some odd dollars. Yes.
Okay. All in favor of this motion signify the same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. There aren't none. Lonzo, if you will expedite this purchase.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's getting, the general election's going to be a big one this year.
If you don't, Woody will come see.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item under new businesses, approval of the amendments for the last board meeting, July the sixth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion to approve those amendments, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second discussion. All in favor of this motion signify the same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. There aren't none. Okay, now we have, if you've had an opportunity to look, to look at our expenditures, uh, we would need a motion to approve those expenditures for this month.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair, if everyone's hearts clear on this.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. There aren't none. Okay. Next, we come to item number three, which is point, uh, committee appointments, report consideration. I think the only one we have here is on the IDA.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I believe that's, uh, my rotation. Um, I would like to appoint John Beber to, uh, that position.
Second.
Who was that?
John Beber.
John Beber. I don't think we need a second on it.
You know.
You know. Are there any other? Appointments? Any other people for this position?
This is his appointment and we did receive a letter from the IDA, but this is Nate's appointment, his rotation.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of this motion, Nate's appointment, signify the same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. There aren't none. Down to citizens' comic period. Do we have a list of people who signed in?
We do.
Okay, the first name I have on the list is Co., Co. Turner.
Uh, yes, I'm, uh, Lieutenant, Nate Volunteer Fire Department. Uh, it's been brought to our attention about a new building for our department being built in Lower Barrow Wallow, which is, uh, very appreciative and we do appreciate it, but the current location where our department is is for better response time than being in downtown Lower Barrow Wallow. Because seventy-two percent of our calls is either up sixty-three or down sixty-three, not in the town of Dank. The other percentage of the calls is in the downtown of Dank. Why that, uh, I've seen that we had got, uh, that you all had put in for, uh, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, uh, dollars to build a new building. With ours, I've, I've got to search and there's, uh, laws that has come out now that you have to have a drive-through fire department. You can't have a backend fire department if you build a new station. Uh, there's multiple things that's going on. We have been at this, in around seventy-six, we've been at the current location we're at. Seventy-six, seventy-seven in that area. And the, the board was gi- gifted this land by Dixon Russell Coal Company, LLC, which was Quenchfield back then. And whenever they was gifted this, uh, property, they were supposed to do all maintain it, maintaining on the building. Well, it's been a lack of maintaining on the building. So, we've been reaching out, trying to get help and nobody has stepped up to, to try to help us to be, uh, to take care of our building. So then we just kind of heard rumors that they was going to replace the building with a Dollar General and we're over here trying to figure out where we going to go. You know, we're a department, we have nowhere to go. We've had people try to contact, um, multiple, multiple people from the board and nobody has yet to speak with us. So, our thing is, is what we're wanting is, we are very, very appreciative of a new building because we do need a new building. Yeah, uh, I mean, you can walk through, you can look and see exactly what we need and that would help us respond on calls better. Well, the location that we finally got out, that it was going to be put in Lower Barrow Wallow, the location of it is going to make our time, response time to, to serve our community so much slower. If, if it is put down at the, I believe it was one twelve Lower Barrow Wallow Road, I'm not one hundred percent sure of the exact location. But if it is going to be put down there, it's going to slow us down, just like on the house fire that we had two days ago. If we would have had to wait to go all the way through town, a one-lane bridge, if there's a coal, uh, a coal truck coming through there, there's multiple coal trucks come through day in and day out. If we'd have had to stop, it would have slowed us down from being able to save the home. And which we responded, we saved the home from the location where we're at. Uh, multiple other calls that I can, I can, I've got sixteen-page call log that I can show you that we have never missed a single call. We have responded and saved multiple houses and lives from our location where we're at. If we go and we move this down into Lower Barrow Wallow, it is going to slow us down on response time. Because ninety percent of the people that is on Dank Fire Department either lives up sixty-three or down sixty-three. You have a very few that live in the actual town part. And we're seeking your all's help to, to keep it at the current location. That's, that's my spiel with the whole entire thing. We, we would love to have a new station. And then, I mean, it, it means a lot to me that you all would even bring that up to give us a new station. But we need, we need you all to speak with us because nobody has yet to speak with us about why it's important for us to stay where we're at instead of where you all are wanting to put it. And that's, that's all that I have, but our biggest thing is we just need, we need your all's support to stay where we're at because of location, if it was your house that was on fire, then you would want us to get there as quick as possible. If it was your child in a vehicle or your family member in a vehicle that was trapped, response time is so important. And you can, in a flood zone, where the location is down in, uh, Lower Barrow Wallow is in a flood zone. You can't shelter somebody and put them in a, take them out of a flood and put them in a flood. If, if it is flooded, how are we going to get to respond to the station in Lower Barrow Wallow to, to get a truck? You don't have to worry about that because it's on sixty-three. You don't have to worry about a flood zone where we're, the, uh, current location. And we really need your all's help to, to hear us and to talk with us because it is very important that we stay at this location instead of the Lower Barrow Wallow location.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Jared Ring.
Good morning, y'all. Feel a little bit, uh, neat coming up here, uh, to talk about Sunday alcohol sales after seeing Isaiah House and the fire department speak. Just to comment on both of those because those are issues that are dear to my heart. I had two members of my family that, uh, nearly went through foster care. One of them did, spent her entire teenage years with a, uh, foster family. And those were both direct consequences of opiates. So I, I'd just like to say that it's only appropriate that the opioid abatement money is put with an organization that helps with that. Likewise, my neighbor's house straight across the road from me has burned down twice. Uh, the first time was a bacon grease fire. The second time was a faulty hot water heater right after they rebuilt it. And both times, it was Dank Fire Department and St. Paul that arrived there first. And the first time, they were able to save the structure partially. So, uh, I'd just like to encourage you to listen to what Dank Fire Department has to say. I've seen them work personally and they're, they're very good at what they do. So, uh, I encourage you to listen to their input. With that said, back to the issue of Sunday alcohol sales. That's something that, uh, is costing our businesses a lot of revenue. And I know that Mr. Kilgore had said that he thought it might be in violation of some state statutes. So, uh, I'd like to ask you all to take a look into that again. Uh, Mr. Wampler could look into it or maybe we could even do something like a motion to temporarily suspend that ordinance pending review of the state code. But just to step back through some of the points I made before on that. Uh, Sundays are fourteen percent of the year and this is the Bible Belt. So Sundays are pretty big economic driver days. This is costing our businesses a lot of foot traffic because Russell County is kind of an oblong rectangle. There is nowhere in the county that you can't drive fifteen, twenty minutes and be somewhere that you can have a beer with your meal. And the after church crowd, if they have to drive somewhere to do that, they're going to spend their money there. So it's costing our businesses, it's costing us revenue. Um, and to, to run through some spitball numbers that I did before. If we were to levy a five percent tax on alcohol sales on Sundays only and we had $10,000 in alcohol on an average Sunday, five percent of that would be $500. Uh, fifty-two Sundays in a year is $26,000 in revenue from alcohol alone. And I think that's fairly con- conservative numbers and I did just make them up. But $26,000 is. But twenty-six thousand dollars is almost enough money to get a salary for another maintenance employee to help Lonzo out or something of that nature. So I'd like to consider you to, ask you to consider doing something about this immediately. Because my understanding is this has come up a few times in the past and it's kinda just been forgotten. Couple meetings have passed since we spoke to Mr. Kilgore about it. So, in that time, we've lost considerable revenue for the county and for every gas station, grocery store, and restaurant in the county. And again, the optics of this are terrible when we're trying to attract businesses who come in on their Sundays off because they're not running their corporations. On Monday through Friday, they sit down and find out it's a dry county wherever they've chosen to eat. And they're like, what is this, nineteen-ten? So, I think the optics are terrible, it's costing us money. It's artificially hamstringing our businesses in a way that they can't compete with businesses that are five minutes away from Castlewood to Saint Paul or, you know, Honeacre over into Claypool Hill and Cedar Bluff and all that. So I, I'd just like to encourage you to get a hold of it. Maybe even motion to suspend the ordinance soon, like now even would be nice, if you're able to, of course. But that's my spiel on that, I just wanted to make sure it didn't slip through the cracks. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Angie.
Okay, first off, I wanted to talk to y'all about how the meetings are handled. Because there really needs to be an easier way to do the meetings than what we're doing now. The public really doesn't feel like they're involved in any way in any decisions going on. Back years ago, I used to attend most of the board meetings. And as they went down the agenda, each item was discussed among the supervisors and questions and comments from the public were allowed as long as they were in an orderly manner before each issue was tabled or brought for a vote. That seems like the only fair and logical way to deal with the issues and ensure that everyone can voice their opinions. It's kinda been proven that just by voting for a representative doesn't mean you always get the representation you want. So, it'd be really good, you know, if we could speak on some of the concerns instead of saying, well, I elected you, you know. Now, I'll sit back and let you do whatever you want to. Because, well, that can get us up the creek really quick. But also like with Mr. Turner, he probably hasn't been to a meeting since, since the change to where you all can't speak to us. Interaction, sorry. But I'm sure when he was up here and he left here, he probably thought, well, yeah, okay, I guess nobody's interested because nobody said anything. And it's a really bad way to feel. And I know that that's why Lonzo gets so tired of us. Because he's the only person that we can go to and kinda force him to give us an answer. Or either, you know, ask one of y'all after the meeting, but it goes so much better with transparency if we could talk to you inside the meeting. And I also wanna say that the Isaiah House, I am really, really glad that they're getting opioid money. Because I think that they really deserve it. The foster kids really need help around here. And just my opinion, but I like that a whole lot better than C-Cor. But that's all I had to say, thank you.
That's all I have on the list, is there anybody else that wants to speak? Going once, twice, closed? Okay, now we have the county attorney's reports, Will, if you wanna go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Few items today. Mark C-one in your packet is the Cooperative Partnership Agreement with C-Cor. At the last meeting, board approved one point nine million dollars of opioid money to go to C-Cor. And also passed a motion that was conditionally approving the one hundred thousand dollars upon a new application that would be submitted by C-Cor. That application was not received, to my knowledge, by the county administrator or myself. So I think it'd be proper for the board to assume that C-Cor does not intend to draw down on your county funds for their project. However, that left me in a bind because our agreement that I drafted for the board relative to the prohibitions for sex offenders to be placed at C-Cor did not move forward because that was tied to your one hundred thousand dollar grant of county money. So at this point in time, what we're gonna do is put the same restrictions that I placed in that contract into a new M O U with C-Cor before any county money is distributed for the purposes that they've laid out in their application. Board, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I understood very clearly from your last meeting that you did not want C-Cor operating without the protections and the prohibitions against placement of sex offenders in the facility. And so until C-Cor agrees to that, I don't think we're gonna let a single dollar go to C-Cor through the cooperative partnership. And so all it will take is C-Cor's assent to those terms and then their opioid project would move forward from the board's last motion. And so that's just an informational item at this point, there's nothing that the board has to act on today. But I wanted to give you an update and let you know where we were. I was kind of expecting to get an updated application so that they could receive that one hundred thousand dollars and we didn't get that. So, they have submitted a revised budget and revised scope of work, which I will be in the M O U that I'll present to the board at the next meeting. So that, that's C-one. C-two is the Wise County, Russell County RIFA, that's Regional Industrial Facilities Authority. Board passed a motion at the May thirteenth meeting to approve the RIFA ordinance. So now the next steps on that are for the RIFA ordinance to be submitted to the Secretary of Commonwealth and the State Corporation Commission, which manages all the business entities and business registrations in the state of Virginia. Wise County, Carrie Mullins, their county attorney, is submitting our information on behalf of Russell County and Wise County RIFA to Secretary of Commonwealth imminently. I'm not sure if it's happened this week or not, but once that, once that approval takes place and we get our entity documents from the State Corporation Commission, then the RIFA would meet and hold an organizational meeting where we'll set out bylaws and the rules governing the RIFA. Just for reference, and again, the RIFA ordinance that you passed requires the county administrator and the I D A director from Russell to be the representatives that will report to the board on the RIFA activities. And then also conversely, in Wise County, they have their I D A director and their county administrator, which are Brian Phelan and Mike Hatfield. It doesn't obligate the board or the county to spend any money or do anything relative to any project. So this is not something that you all, is out of your control once you set it up. But rather, I would, I would tell you it's a vehicle for joint investment in industrial and economic development projects between the two counties. You all have different budgets and different characteristics as to your county jurisdictions. I think Russell County has more developable land than Wise County does when it comes to, you know, topography standpoint, a geographic standpoint. And so there may be some advantages long-term that you all can utilize through the RIFA. And so that's really also just an update, it's not anything that the board needs to do today relative to that. But you will see an organizational meeting be set after we get approval from the state on the formation of the entity. So that's updates there. Let's see. We've had seven FOIAs this month, which we're still working through several of them. On the beer on Sundays ordinance request, I'll just say, the law office and the county attorney work at the pleasure of the board. If there is something that you need me to do relative to that ordinance, you instruct me to do that and I will do it. But since I've had no instruction from anyone on the board relative to that ordinance, that's not on my list of to-do items until you guys put it there. But if you need me to review that or suggest any changes to it, you can task me with that at any point in time.
Mr. Chair, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Wampler.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that we did leave that in the hands of your, of Mr. Kilgore at one time, maybe last month, month before, I can't remember. So, that should be somewhere on your radar, am I wrong, board? Okay.
What, what's your pleasure on that?
We would like for you to look at that and we would like to, I'm not the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if we might, but look at that.
Yeah, I think we, we would like to look at it and get some understanding of what needs to be done.
Mr. Kilgore indicated that it possibly was in conflict with the state law. So that's, I think, what the request was, was to see how our current ordinance is in, is or is not in conflict with state, state code.
Okay, so, so the task is you want me to determine if it's in conflict with state code as it currently stands?
And if we can redo it or whatever we need to do to help our businesses, that's what we want to do. I think I'm speaking properly.
And there's always the option of putting it, making a referendum, making a referendum on.
There may be, there's certain enumerated things you can and can't put on a referendum ballot. And I know we passed the point of referendum for this, this period. But with further direction, I will get an update to the board rapidly on whether or not that's in conflict with the state code.
Yeah, I just think we need to know what our options are on that, how we can address it.
Yep, I think it would be maintain or repeal, but I'll get you some clear guidance.
Also, whether or not it can go to referendum or not if it's within the code to do that.
Okay. I believe that concludes my report, Mr. Chair and Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chair, just wanna make a point of clarification and, and Will, you can comment back to this. But last meeting, we voted not to give the hundred thousand dollars to C-Cor. And then I believe after that vote, you had made a request that, that they resubmit their application or update that application. So, I just wanna make it clear that, that no monies have been approved for C-Cor. Even if they do resubmit an application, it still would have to come back to the board for approval.
That's, Mr. Chair. The one point nine million dollars was approved by the state and, and the board also approved the distribution of that one point nine. However, we got in a position where the other side of that, which was our hundred thousand dollars, did not move forward. And so again, that one point nine million dollars is still conditioned upon an M O U being executed with the county. And our M O U will have all the material terms of my agreement that I drafted prohibiting sex offenders from being placed in the county. And if they don't sign that, then their one point nine million dollars will not be distributed by the county.
Okay, excellent.
To make clear if that wasn't clear the first time.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else? Finish you up, Will, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hey Lonzo.
Thank you, Chairman. On the county administrator reports and request, on the first one, of course, in your packet is reporting only, is a list of the county road reporting systems. That was the maintenance issues that were sent in by the citizens to be able to move on to V-DOT or if something that could be handled in-house within the county. The second one on the reports, county administrator reports, was the V-DOT monthly road system. One of the things that, of course, it has the maintenance ones that, the V-DOTs reports. But take a look at the overlays and latex routes that's around there. That's the ones that are paving that's within your area to make sure that, you know, you keep up with which ones are getting done, which ones are not. So that way we can, you know, address it at that time too. Of course, it's getting near, well, with the heat and the rain, the heat and rain, I don't know how well everybody's gardens are doing, but.
Well, Lonzo, excuse me, let me back up to the road reporting, because I have two roads in there. And you have, you have sent this on to V-DOT, they're aware of, they've got it. Because that Belfast Meals does need to be paved. I think what happened, it's being that surface treated type stuff and it just wears out. And then I have another one that's on for Cricket Lane, but it doesn't, it doesn't give me any information on what's needed with Cricket Lane.
Well, that's the closest intersection.
So is it Mountain Road?
That's a long road.
But that's a lot, because that goes all the way. It runs parallel with the mountain, all the way through the county. So I didn't get any information on that one.
It looks like the person didn't indicate their name either, so there's no way to.
See, but even though they come in, we convey them onto V-DOT, so.
So they are aware of Belfast Meals then, all right, thank you.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, and I'm sorry, Mr. Lester, to interrupt you, but on the road report, and I know that we're drilling on this. But I do have one on there also concerning the Roanoke Hill Emergency Access Road that I, I just want the public to know that King Construction is in charge of making sure that that road is taken care of. Not, we're just overseeing that, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is a, that is an emergency access road that was given to the residents on Roanoke Hill while the, V-DOT was building the bridge. If, if they didn't, it wouldn't have had no access out. So, that road is actually on the Nature Conservancy's property and that was in agreement with V-DOT to use a temporary road. Now what we do with the road in the future as an, an access road, if something happens to the bridge or the structure, they would, they, they would have no way out. I mean, that's just, that's just, it's, it's where it's located at, so, yes.
Yes, but until we can get further along, we're just in the middle of construction and it is what it is. And I apologize to my Roanoke Hill folks, but I just wanted to make sure that we clarified that publicly today.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And I think a lot of it, and I'm sure everybody in the counties had this, is the brush is just leaning over the roads, the stop signs, the guard rail. So I wonder if that one on Mountain Road was because they do. And if you've got a big pickup truck, you're swiping those mirrors every time you come through or the top. So I wonder if maybe that was some of the thing, but the brush needs to be cut, the trilliums need to be cut and the guard rails and stop signs need to be cleared. That may be it, I don't know.
And Lonzo, will you follow up with V-DOT on that Roanoke Hill Road, access road? Because according, well, by the comments here, it's in really bad shape unless you have four-wheel drive, you're not getting up it.
I came up to project Friday, it's been corrected, everything is, yep, I just came, I went site visit my own, so. Because that is adjacent to the Fire Department. And that's, and that's, I'll get into that portion of the emergency road tying into the Dank Fire Department and et cetera and access. So, when we get to the Dank Fire Department. But right now, it's, it is in travelable condition and it is under King Construction, which is under V-DOT for the bridge. So, next on the county administrator reports and request is, and as, as we mentioned, I don't think we make a move, whether federal, state, or local, unless we go after a grant. We wire these grants out. So, now on the Russell County Victim Witness Assistant Program, we have a seventy thousand dollar grant from the Department of Criminal Justice for that position. So I need an approval for seventy thousand dollars from the Department of Criminal Justice. So moved.
So you have a motion and a second to accept this grant, any discussion? If not, I'll only favor signify abstaining, aye? All opposed, like sign, there aren't any?
Sorry, Mr. Kaisfer mentioned back, on the Cannerys, I went from the roads and got stopped on the Cannerys. The Cannerys will open on August the sixth. The reason, last year we opened them around July the fifteenth. And this year, we've had scheduling issues with the boiler inspectors. These have to be upcoded by Department of Health and to make sure that the residents, while they're in there cooking their stuff and everything in the equipment is, is safe. So we have to have fire marshals and boilers inspectors and Department of Health so to make sure these are safe for the citizens when they utilize them. So we had to delay it too and we are going to open them this week on August the sixth. for the citizens when they utilize them, so we had to delay it too, and we are going to open them this week on August the sixth for utilization, so.
And we, we can be a little flexible about when they close.
Yes, sir, that's, that's up to the pleasure of the board.
As long as they're being used.
That is correct. Next on the county administrator reports is, of course, we're into the Dainte Fire Department, so, okay. Now, I'll start off not with the grant or the fire department. Looking through this and working on this, we, we actually, you know, to give a little history of the Dainte Fire Department or all fire departments, we have eight fire departments in our county, we have eight. Dainte Fire Department is the only department, fire department is on county property or owned by the county. The other seven are owned on their own, the, each in, each fire department has its own charter and it's on board. And what the county does, we contribute to their operations out of the budget each and every year, so, but Dainte, in nineteen sixty-nine, Lord, this is going back, you know, almost where I was born, I just told how old I was. They were giving the fire department, they, this building to utilize, well, all the way from nineteen sixty-nine, sixty-eight, somewhere around there to two thousand and three, they had that property and it was conveyed to them in two thousand and three. So, they kept it from sixty-nine to two thousand and three, and then they finally conveyed it to the county. And the county has it, and of course, we do our annual appropriations to the Dainte Fire Department each and every month, like we do every, every other fire department, and of course, they, they maintain it. Well, by the time from nineteen sixty-nine, that wasn't when it was built, that's just when it was, you know, utilized by the Dainte Fire Department, so the building is very old, and I mean, I think it was built in nineteen, somebody, history nineteen fifty-six. So, around that time, fifty-six, fifty-seven, I mean, even the people up there, I get different dates and, and somebody may have the correct date and date time, but, but the point is this, over the years, this thing has settled and it has broken apart. Well, right before the pandemic started, we started working on trying to get a grant for it at the end. And then the pandemic hit and everything went stopped. Only thing that we could work on during that time, and Jess will tell you as emergency management, only thing we had to focus on was COVID, PPNE, protective equipment, because the operations going into a house and pandemics, we had to hyper-focus on that, so after, and still there's COVID out there, but now we've got back on focus. What everybody keeps focusing on is why the land. Well, we got the grant for a building, when you put in for grants, we put in for multiple ones, and you'll put in for a hundred, you may get one out of a hundred. Well, this one on the Dainte is not so much about where the property is, we can move it from the property, we just had to have a piece of land that the county owned that was not sinking. The feds would have not conveyed a half a million dollars approximately on a, on a piece of property that was sinking. The next piece of property that we had that was available, that was under the county's authority, was property on Bar, Bar Hollow, Bar Wallah, yes, thank you, excuse me, sorry about that. It's adjacent to the community center and the fire rescue squad, so we utilize that, but the, the grant is not important. We can move that piece of property, if we find, and we've worked, I've worked with people that have lived there and I've talked to Ethan Taylor, he knew that we were working on this, Ms. Wallace had to convey to him, but in the meantime, we, we got so many no's, we couldn't tell anything, but when we hit the four hundred thousand that you, you can see that in here, we didn't get no's until July the fourteenth, I mean, that's now, that was two weeks ago. So, again, the property is not the important thing now, but where we pick it at and choose, that will be chosen by, in conjunction with the fire department and the community, as like we put out on the notice that there will be public hearings on where to be able to station this at. As anyone knows, and, and I've talked to, you know, emergency management and Jess and Jared and Rest, anyone knows it's, it's being in Dainte or lives in Dainte, you have to have a fire department. That was what our main concern was, because of the antiquated buildings and the structures and the closeness of some of these houses, we were very concerned as fast as response when, and that was one of the key things when Mr. Cole, Mr. Turner was talking, response time. If you're up our, if you go up Stray Hollow, and I'm going to use this as an example, no disrespect to the people that live there, but that, from a emergency response time, if one catches during that time, that whole block on both sides will go. Now, you talk about response time, that has to be there. The board supervisors had never anticipated, never considered moving it out of Dainte, and that was the Facebook post I do, somebody was moving it here and moving it there. There is no way from any emergency management perspective or planning or strategic planning, you could ever move that Dainte Fire Department out. Now, where it goes, we've got four hundred twenty-three thousand, is that going to complete it all? No, we're going to have to go after a couple more grants to get this under a roof. But we can look at pieces of property on our own that we can do, but we got four hundred and some thousand dollars locked in to that fire department now, no matter where it goes, if it goes up the head, to the bottom, over the Dainte, up Stray Hollow, if we put it at the ballpark, it don't matter, but it will go where the citizens of Dainte wants it to go, so. I hope I hit on everything. Ms. Wallace.
No, but I appreciate that, yes, everything you said is the exact same truth. The fire department historically was down in what we call the core of the community anyway, many years ago, when the water, the Castlewood Water Company was in that community center, that is a community center, was built by Clinchfield Coal as a community center, it was not built as a fire department. It doesn't function, the building doesn't function, even though they've been blessed to be in that building at the expense of the county. And so, we appreciate that, so a new building will be safe. And, and we, I appreciate Mr. Turner, I have not spoken to him, he hasn't reached out to me. Mr. Turner, if you'd like to, I'll give you my telephone number, but anyway, I have been in contact with Ethan Taylor, so we have that information for everyone, if you would like that, it's no problem to put that out there. So, a lot of misinformation and we're trying to protect our community. I have had some folks reach out to me and ask me what the ISO rating is for the Dainte Fire Department. Mr. Turner, is he still here? Okay, I would like to know what the ISO rating is, that's an insurance rating. I think the town of St. Paul recently posted their ISO rating and they're working feverishly to get it down because that's a safety record for us, and that works on our insurance. And so, the folks in Dainte have given me some of their insurance cost, which their fire insurance, if they can even afford it, is out the roof, and it's more than mine. And so, I, I'm just, they're struggling to pay a power bill, my citizens in Dainte are struggling to pay a power bill and they can't afford fire insurance. Their ISO ratings will bring that fire insurance down. And the fire department should be working with the PSA to check our fire hydrants and that, I don't know that that's going on at this time. And in our packet, we also have, they're nine ninety, that's public information for you guys. So, the nine ninety, it doesn't exist for the Dainte Fire Department at this time, they're going to have to get themselves back in functioning order, so I do want the citizens of Dainte to know that we here, sitting on this board today, are very concerned about the situation that we have in that community, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace.
So, you need a motion for us to accept this grant, Lonzo, this money? Or is this just an informational course for mail?
That's not a, that's.
It's not a grant.
It's not, it's not real yet, is it, it has to be approved by the feds.
That is correct, that'll be the October, but, but the good thing about these grants is on this one, it, of course, we have spoken with Morgan Griffith's office, I'm going to, let me go into this. So, we spoke with Morgan Griffith, Mark Warner and, and Tim Kane's office, so they know and aware of the situation in Dainte and they have reached out personally to Ms. Wallace and myself, and they have wanted to make sure that they know that the dire, you know, they know that Dainte community because of the activity that's there, but they also know it from a emergency services perspective, that the, you know, the age of the houses, the closest of the houses in the community, now, right now, we have, yeah. And right now, we have four hundred twenty-three thousand, yeah, four hundred twenty-three thousand that is dedicated to it. Like I said previously, we will have to go after some more, which we put into the grant, we can pull from block grants, D H C D, we'll try emergency management, we, we hit these at all directions, so, and, but the point is this, we've got, the land isn't, you know, we can't put it back, you know, on, on sinking property, I mean, but the, we can move forward, so. With that, and, and Ms. Wallace, she touched on the ISO rating. Now, when we were going through and doing the analysis, because we had to do it through R and D, rural development, because it's part of their program and their fire structures and programs under the feds, they, they do a community analysis of what it is and ISOs and all this and community development. And the thing about the ISOs, now this is the example. What, they are paying in-house insurance, like, and I'm going to use a hundred thousand, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, is twenty-five hundred dollars a year, that, that's how important that ISO, ISO, ISO rating is. People in the communities don't understand, now, if you're sitting in the Oaks or somewhere else, you're going to be leveled down because of the response time and the fire hydrants in, in place. Each, each area has a ISO rating, that determines your house insurance and how much risk you are. So, higher you are on that ISO, it's, the higher your house insurance is going to be, so I didn't mean to get off track on, on house insurance, but the importance is that we keep a fire department, we have eight, and we've got those, those are logistically located as, as, as Sonny and, and Jess will tell you, those are located in each area to be able to cover where, you know, the majority of them is, and they do have response times, they have protocols, beacons, they know that they have to be there within a certain amount of time. This is looked at by insurance companies, it's looked at by health, it's looked at by a lot of demographics, so it's very important. But again, the four sixty-three that I had up there, and we'll go into a little bit more later, but that is what is granted and will continue moving forward, I do not need a motion on it now, but I will later. Yes, ma'am, I didn't mean to take a long story about it, but. Next on county administrator reports is the, of course, the Virginia, we're back on the fire now. Virginia Department of Fire Program Grants, we got a hundred and eight thousand, one sixty-seven, every year, each fire department, we go after these grants too. Each, all fire departments gets approximately eleven, twelve thousand dollars each to be able to buy equipment and training. These, this is limited in scope to what they can utilize it for, and each department gets to utilize a hundred and eight thousand. I will need a motion to accept the one oh eight, one sixty-seven into the Russell County Fire Department Program.
Sir?
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept this grant, discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, likes, and there aren't none.
Next, another emergency, it comes like in waves what you're doing. This is the emergency shelter upgrade grant from the Department of Virginia of Emergency Management. This is an upgrade grant of thirty-three thousand, eight hundred forty-two dollars with a local, it's a seventy-thirty grant with assistance for the Dainte Community Center upgrade and the Dainte Rescue Squad for backup propane generators, for those in a case of emergencies that required the use of the facilities as shelters. So, that's a thirty-three, I need a motion for thirty-three thousand, eight forty-five.
I'll give you that motion.
I have a motion and a second for this, to accept this grant, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, likes, and.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to make a statement on this, I am, I'm extra pleased that our emergence, we've been recognizing our emergency folks today by plaques, and so Mr. Glass and Mr. Powers has worked on this and I'm very thankful for these generators because our outlying communities lose power a lot. And so, this is, this is going to come in handy for those folks in the Dainte community, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next on the county administrator reports and requests is, this is the O A A F Y twenty-five Cooperative Agreement Partnership for the Russell and Dixon County, this is another O A A money, this is O A money coming to the county for our recovery houses, which is, and we partnered with Dixon County on this, so Dixon County gets half of the two fifty, we get half of, and you know, we each get a hundred twenty-five, make up a total of two fifty. Russell County is the fiduciary on these grants, so not only is private entities or nonprofits, but also as the county, we're going after it too, so as, as part of the recovery, this one is the men's and women's facilities that we have that are for our nonprofits that are here in town. So, I need a motion for acceptance of the O A A F Y twenty-five Cooperative Partnership Agreement for the Russell and Dixon County projects.
I'll make that motion to accept this money.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, discussion, this is coming from the state.
This is from the state part of money.
Nothing to do with the local money. This is extra money that we can ask for if we do a regional application.
I'm going to have to give a train on O A A.
This is the state part of money and it is a fifty-fifty regional, because as you know, our folks, we move, they might live in Dixon County while, then they move to Russell County or vice versa, and this is a partnership that if we have someone that needs housing, they might be from Lebanon, but they moved to Dixon County, they can be served over there or vice versa, and this is from the state part of money, not the local part of money.
Yes, let's, let's get the difference in that.
Any further discussion?
Very confused in this committee.
All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Chairman. Next is the agreement, just to finish up, the cooperative agreement, as you can see on the screen, that our direct distributions and, you know, I think I'm going to confuse them more now, so that's county money. So, let's, let's call it what it is, it's county funding, but one of the things that I wanted to understand and we're getting a lot of issues on, our O A A gold standard, we do carry it, it exists. Actually, it exists to the point of sixty-three thousand and fifty-two dollars that we got this year just for holding that standards, for meeting that criteria, so people, you know, do a little research. So, next is, of course, the Isaiah House was on my agenda, so we moved that up, so next is the Russell County.
Let me interrupt you for a minute, Lonzo. I'm looking at these numbers here on that gold standard, I, I don't know how many people's looked at this, but that, that's sixty-three thousand dollars, and then you go on down through the years, if that can be maintained, is my understanding, that's, that's an additional two hundred and seven thousand dollars, so that, that's pretty important that we keep that, and I appreciate you for.
Thank you.
For taking care of that, because I, I didn't realize how much money was involved in that gold standard, and I think making the public aware is, is pretty important that, that we maintain that. And I just realized this myself, sitting here looking at the paperwork, but I, I thank you, sir.
Well, thank you, and just a little tag on, if we go after the state money like we did on the Dixon, that will even go up more, so as we keep compiling and moving our numbers, but we will get fluent at this to be able to help the community as much as possible in any capacity that we can. The Isaiah House has done, the Russell County Sheriff's Department Drug Task Force account, this is required by the auditors, it's housekeeping, so I need approval for the establishment of the Russell County Drug Task Force account for restitution funds.
I'll make that motion for you.
Rebecca's on the road today, I'll say. Rebecca's on a roll today. I'll say.
I know. I'm ready to roll, y'all.
Rebecca made motion, David second. Any further discussion?
This is basically just a housekeeping task that we have for Alicia, that she has to have this account to put this money in.
All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. There aren't none.
And, next on the County Administrator Reports, a request is the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, the Russell County Sanitary Landfill. This is the letter of no deficiency, though, for the inspection that occurred at our landfill for permit number two fifty-eight and five fifteen. I need approval and acknowledgement of that no deficiency letter.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Hensley, second by Mr. Kaiser. Discussion. If not all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. There aren't none.
Okay, noun is the one that Ms. Di had referenced before, for the schools, and this is the schools, and this is at the pleasure of the Board of Supervisors. What, the cat, the, the Russell County School Board has approached the Board of Supervisors at the Lebanon Primary School for these partials, as you can see on the map, on the plot, on, on the front side of these. I think there is eight different plots, tracks of land that's in this, with the centi. It's all these from here into here to here. They are wanting to work out a proposal with the Russell County I D A, the Russell County Board of Supervisors, to convey that property to the county for economic development and jobs. So.
I think we need to, we need to talk a little more, you know, initially talked about these lower tracks, and I assume they want these, I call them the middle tracks, or in that midsection, eleven through six. So, we just need to confirm that they.
Have they voted on this yet? Have they?
No, they have not.
No, no.
He wanted letter support.
Yeah, they, they.
Before he went.
They got ones.
Lonzo wants a letter to go.
The school board member that's bringing this forward wants a letter.
Oh, okay.
But, but what he has proposed is to turn this over to the county. Now, we did look at lots eleven and lot twelve for a heliport out on that cul-de-sac. They had, they had already committed that, I think, to the Sheriff's Department. They wanna build a storage building out here, either here, here, somewhere.
They can't use the thing that's on the back of that building?
No, no. They've got, they've got a lot of storage in the back of that building. Yeah, they can't use the, so, that, that's, that's when the school board came back and proposed, actually proposed this one, but that blocks up all this, so we took them over and looked at this.
That little heliport that they used to have years ago when it was Clinchfield. They can't use it anymore?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
And the, they, they talked about using the building for storage, but they've got, the school hasn't filled up with much stuff. Give the schools an idea to come out here and look at these.
Is this for industrial development, or can it be retail, residential? I mean, or is it open-ended?
I think it's kinda open-ended.
Well, wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. Wait a minute. Slow down, Fester. The town is zoned. So, right now, if you're on Main Street, they're only zoned for commercial, and, I mean, small commercial or retail. Not, you can't do industrial or, you know, something.
I don't, I don't think you've got enough property for industrial anyway.
Yeah.
They, these lots range from, I think that number three down there, closest to the road beside Blue Ridge Realty, is about a half an acre. And the biggest one would be this number five, which is about two and a half acres.
Yeah. And number six on the top side. Well, one of the things, when we met up there and looked at it, one of the key things is, is the Cumberland Plateau, which means Steve Silver and that, we've toured one housing facility. We anticipate touring another one, as far as growing our housing area. And, you know, for, for workers' housing, kind of an upscale-type housing project. So, I think that working with the town of Lebanon on any growth, or any potential growth, as far as a housing development, or retail development, or whatever like that, that land's laid there for thirty-odd years, and all they've done is mowed it. So, it would make a, a real opportunity here to also grow the economics of, of this opportunity.
Right. And one of the things that the school board has conveyed, of course, you know, you, you've got the town of Lebanon here, you've got the, the Board of Supervisors, the I D A, and they're all gonna have to sit, and the school board, all of them is gonna have to sit down at the table. It's gonna take all four of them actually to work this. But, you know, it, it does present an opportunity, but they do have some of those restrictions that they, they, there's gonna be no alcohol sales. There'll be no vaping shops. There can be nothing that is applicable to any school that's within the Commonwealth of Virginia that has to have its setbacks and restrictions and approaches. So, yeah, so they're looking, you know, applicable or similar type of businesses that's on, on Main Street. They do get, the I D A will tell you, if he was still here, that they do get a lot of requests for these pieces of property, especially from retail, you know, you know, like restaurants and et cetera, that wants to be on the Main Street, which is the prime piece of property.
I think the one question that is whether or not we could, you know, have turnoffs off their access road. I think we'd almost have to have that. And, you know, how that, you're in a school, you know, if you've ever been out there to, I mean, that whole area's congested right through there when you go either drop kids off or pick kids up. So, their idea was maybe we could get access to at least these lower lots, you know, from the main road. And I see a couple of them, three of them, it wouldn't be any problem, and maybe you could access this four and five back over here. That, that'll all need to be worked out. But those lower lots are prime commercial lots, I think.
So, do you, do you need a motion, Mr. Lester, to send a letter of support for this?
It's still, it will.
It's very conceptual right now. So, in, in tune. So, I, I, you know, I, I would recommend to the board that, as again said before, that the Board of Supervisors, the I D A, the Board of Supervisors is in support, that we move forward in the development of this proposal, and also make recommendations that the Board of Supervisors, Town Lebanon, the I D A, and the school board, you know, meet to come to a complete four-person partnership agreement on this, 'cause everybody touches it. 'Cause the town's is zoned, one, so those commercial interests is gonna have to be fixed. We've looked at the road and the route going to the school, which may have to be redone too, to be able to get that expanded. So, it's going, it's still so conceptual, but the letter of support would be to define, to move forward with the proposed economic development of those properties. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to, I guess we're gonna write a letter expressing that we would like to sit down and discuss this potential project further with the schools and the town. So, any discussion? If not all in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye. All opposed.
No, 'cause, yeah, I mean, when, let, let Dr. Hooker come and talk to us, and then we'll, then I'll see what she has.
I have five, four, or six for one opposed. Motion passes.
You got to see what I got today. You did go down the file quick, didn't he? All right, the last thing on the County Administrator Request is travel request for Jeff, Jeff Power, Jess Powers as the Hazmat Response Team. And I wanna add in Jared's request too, that is, it's in there, but it's not listed on here, and Bridget, Bridget McLaughlin's to the Building Code Officials Association Training. That is my last request.
Need a motion to approve his travel request.
Yes, sir.
Jess has already traveled, correct? You've already, okay, you're wanting your reimbursement, and then Bridget's going in September, October. Okay.
Yeah, and, and Jared's in there too. He was, he's, but I need him approved.
So, I have a motion and a second to approve all these.
Yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign.
Chairman, that concludes the County Administrator Reports and Requests.
Okay. Now, we're done the board discussions. Reminders. Andrew, do you have anything you want to say?
Oh, I had two things. One come up here today is the Mr. Turner that come and spoke from Dainte Fire Department. I've, I've talked to several people in the county that live out, even outside of the area, but maybe have ties to Dainte. If, this, and, and I really didn't know what was going on, when I'm getting messages and calls, but I try to talk to people as much as I can. And if, if this started in twenty twenty, you know, I only got here in January, so there's reason why I didn't know what was going on. But, if, if it involves moving forward, if the board is working on something that involves a specific group in our county, if we can call, kinda be transparent and work together with those people so that they know what was going on, maybe we would eliminate some of these phone calls and concerns that the citizens have that I really didn't know how to address. Next thing I have is I've talked to several people over the past few months about their, their road to their home, as far as the VDOT roads. And we have this coal severance money, and if, if Mr. Lester can get a meeting set up with coal severance folks and VDOT, so that we can at least put this on VDOT's radar as to the concerns of our public, I'd appreciate that.
I will do that. I will set that up.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I know, I think I've said my due. Thank you.
Just that.
I just wanna say thank you to the board for the Isaiah House, O A A money. That is going to go a long way. It's gonna make a lot of difference in our county. Also, just to piggyback off of what Andrew was talking about, you know, with transparency, I know that's something that we ran on, and I think if we have something that comes up in the community like that, if we need to do a town hall, however we need to address it, but if we bring it to where everybody knows what's going on, just keep it out there. And I'm not saying that this wasn't, you know, addressed to certain people, but just, just as public as we can make it, I think we'll go a lot further with people. And we've gotta really work on building our trust back. So, thanks.
Just wanna let everybody know that the First Annual Rite Aid Festival is gonna be held in Holacre this evening from four to nine. We've got three outstanding groups. It's all free. Got bouncy houses for kids, and I think eight or nine food trucks are coming. I hope and pray that rain holds off long enough for us to have this event, and come out, enjoy a little bluegrass music. Thank you.
Rebecca.
No, not really. And we'll go back to this coal severance money. We voted previous board years ago to widen the road and improve the road to the transfer station with our coal severance money. I think it was, back then, it was like three hundred thousand. Good grief, Myrtle, what it'll be today, but we, it still hasn't been improved. The road still hadn't been touched, and we voted to work on that, make that road, 'cause you've got those big trucks that go in there with our trash. So, yeah, I agree. We need to use our coal severance money where it's already been allocated, and to help all these roads with the, put signs back up, guard drills back up, cut the brush. So, I agree with you, Andrew, and that's all.
Mr. Kaiser.
I agree with that. Actually, that road is not, not very good coming through there, and you get a trash truck coming out through there, and you're, you gotta ditch it. Yeah, I've hauled some stuff over there. It's a difficult road, so if we could look at, look at that, I know that may not have been the intent of Mr. Hensley, but I think he's definitely can agree that's not a great road going over there. I mean, it's not that it's in bad condition, it's just not wide enough really for what it's being used for. And, I wanted to see about, we had talked a while back, and I can't remember if we took a vote or not, but to, to look into the idle commercial building tax, to see about, you know, when we have these idled industrial or commercial buildings that are sitting for decades, empty. Now, I know that, that we've got a lot of movement on industrial development right now, but there are still some properties that are just being held indefinitely, and a draw on our potential for, for businesses to come in. So, I'd like us to get moving on that, 'cause it's been at least three months since we talked about that. And we just kinda forget about some things sometimes, and they kinda fall to the wayside, but I wanted to bring that back up. And also wanted to get an update from you, Mr. Lester, on the Oak Grove School demolition. I don't know if you can do that now, or if it's something you need to dig into.
No, Mr. Hensley spoke to me about it previously. Now, we were gonna look into a Brownsville or a grant, or federal grant. Those come open in October, so those are federal, so that each one of them's scheduled. Just, and that brings up another good point. On the Dainte Fire Department, on the C D S, we had seventy-two hours to get that grant in. That's, that's how fast, I worked day and night for those two, three days. That's how short a time on these grant periods. Anybody's done grants, you, you get one that comes in, and you'll get a notice and say, go. And, and we had seventy-two hours to put all that together, to be able to calculate. After we'd done multiple ones, denied, turned down, rejected, send us later, good luck. And then we had seventy-two hours to be able to come up, write the whole grant, get the demographics, put it in place. And that's what I was emphasizing on the land. The land is not important. We've got the money. We'll move it to where the community wants it. Oh, grave, sorry, October.
All right. I had something else, but it went, bye-bye.
I'll make it.
All in favors, aye.